Okay, thank you very much. We'll start the workshop of this, of this, of the city council. And we will take roll call and all members of the council are present. So no reason to go further. And now we'll go into the CIP program. And Monica, you lead enough?
Yes.
All right, it's all yours.
Can everyone hear me? Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members, staff and residents of Montclair. It is my privilege to be here tonight to present the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2024, 2029. Tonight I will discuss the projects that have been completed, the ones that are under construction, and projects in design, and the five-year CIP for fiscal years 2024, 29. The five-year CIP is a proposed schedule of expenditures to build and maintain public infrastructure throughout the city. It is a dynamic plan for identifying, prioritizing, and financing of the city's major capital projects over a multi-year period, as you can see in your summary handout that you should have inside your, inside your CIP binders. So these are your CIP binders, and inside, you should have, inside in your left side, I call it a cheat sheet, which is a two-page of the five-year capital program that I'll be discussing tonight. This is, that's just a little summary. There's more information in your, in your, in your binders, and I'll go over those in a minute. So these projects, the, the projects that we will be discussing tonight are funded from a variety of sources, including Measure I, gas tax, the 2021 lease revenue bond, SB1, sewer operating funds. And all those funds are actually listed on your second tab, no, your first tab, I'm sorry, of your binder, that says Funding Source Acronyms. So in the detail sheet for each project, under those four categories that are listed there, there's a tab for each one of those, for streets, facilities. When you go through each of those projects, it tells you what the funding source is. So we put acronyms there, so you can reference that page whenever you're going through each of those individual projects that have information on design, construction, costs, and the funding source, and what the project entails. So a total of 56 projects are proposed for fiscal years 2024, 29. Again, as mentioned in the categories of street and facility, a street and safety, facility, park, and sewer improvements. These projects were evaluated with respect to the general plan and are determined to be in conformance as presented to the planning commission last Monday. So as of June 30th of this year, Public Works staff completed 17 construction projects totaling approximately 8.1 million. Some of the improvements shown here are the Safe Rafts of School Program, flashing stop signs, paving projects, and alleyway improvements. Public Works staff also completed the landscaping at Fire Station 152, the replacement of the burned Pacific Electric Trail Pedestrian Bridge, and the modular restrooms at the Trans Center. Okay, as well as improvements to Alma Hoffman and City Hall. So this is, uh, the total, the detailed information on those projects. So in total, about 6.8 million in street and safety projects were completed as of the end of this last fiscal year. And about 780,000 was spent on facility improvements, as listed there, and as well as improvements to parks and sewers. Okay. And we also completed a couple of plans and studies. And some of these, like you've already heard in my last update, but I just wanted, there were some other projects that were completed since then. So I had, I just updated those sheets. But I mentioned last time, the San Antonio Creek Trail feasibility study, the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and the Sewer Master Plan update were completed.
Ms. Rada, can you go back and, and give the council members a brief description of each of the projects that have been completed?
Sure. I'll go back to the... To this one?
Sorry, that's the five-year CIP. I'm talking about the completed projects. You have 17 completed projects.
Yes, yes, yes.
Just give them a brief description.
Yeah, let me, I'm supposed to be going backwards, but I keep going forward. That's why, yes, I can go into a little bit more detail. Here we go. So as I mentioned, the Pacific Electric Trail Bridge, which, you know, 220, about 220,000 was funded through an SBCTA grant. The alleyway improvements, mostly in CD, actually in CDBG areas, and that was funded with CDBG funds of 850,000, and 433 approximately of 2021 lease revenue bond funds. Four point, almost 4.5 million in paving rehab in Zones 2, 5, and 6 of the city. The flashing stop sign replacement program, about half, a little bit over half a million, using 2021 lease revenue bond funds. The Safe Rafts of School Program, we made improvements at Mona Vista and Vernon, about 48,000, and improvements there, and the traffic signal interconnect at Mona Vista and I-10 freeway, which was done as part of the widening of the I-10 freeway. About 50,000 of traffic signal black plate reflective upgrades, again, using 2021 lease revenue bond funds, and the repair of the hen rail on the west side of Mona Vista by the police department. So now it's completely safe, painted, and everything, so. And finally, the roadway striping of where we painted certain, our major roadways, like Palo Verde from Central to Benson, Benito from Mills to Benson, Ramona from Mission to Palo Verde, in that, in five major intersections. That's 62.6, oh, 62,655 in gas tax funds. So for a total of 6.8 million in street and safety improvements. And as far as facility improvements, the charging stations, that is being used here all the time at City Hall, City Yard, where our new equipment, electric equipment, will, will be able to use it there, and then the police department. Those, we use AQMD funds to, for that project. And then the Trans Center modular restrooms for, to almost, cost 290,000, using 2021 lease revenue bond funds. The Fire Station 152 landscaping, which looks fabulous, it's almost 55,000. And our digital sign here at City Hall, which is wonderful. I'm sure a lot of you agree with that. And the counter at the Building Engineering, which now matches the finance counter, looks fabulous as well. And new cubicles and furniture at City Hall. So in total, 763,243 facility improvements, using mostly 2021 lease revenue bond funds. And in parks, we, the Alma Hoffman Playground Surface Replacement, and was completed using 2021 lease revenue bond funds. And sewers, again, as part of the I-10 widening, we were able to upgrade or install a new sewer line under the freeway there on Mona Vista from Palo Verde to just north of the I-10 freeway, using sewer operating funds. Okay, back to the studies. Do you want me to go a little bit into this, or anybody want me to go into detail as to what these studies? Yeah, sure. Okay, great. So the San Antonio Creek Trail feasibility study was a planning grant, and it studied the three-mile, or construction of a three-mile trail system on both sides of the San Antonio Creek. And actually, as a result of this study, looking at how much it's gonna cost, what environmental process, what permits we would need, and so on and so forth, we have been able to obtain grants. And so two of them are the, and then you'll see it when I get into the five-year CIP program, is the, the two major barriers there at the MetroLink and Railroad, and also the I-10. The, you know, the, there's an existing one right now, but that, we need to relocate the pipes. So I'm working on an agreement with the, with, I believe, is Reconnecting Communities Grant. So we obtain about 800 million. It's, I can point that out when I go through my slides in, in terms of those two crossings. But this plan is what is helping us to go for more grants. We are actually waiting to hear back for a grant that we applied from Orchard all the way to Palo Verde. So, and as you know, the first phase of that trail is under construction through the Sunset Beautification Project. So, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have a trail there. And then the other one is the Parks and Rec Master Plan, which we need to adopt the final plan. But basically, that, that plan analyzed all of our parks, and also the recreation part of it, the programming, and determined where we lack, what, what amenities we lack. And, and also because of this plan, we have been granted some funding. As you know, the Sunset Park and also the, well, the Reader's under construction. But we are continually applying for grants, and we're using this plan to let everyone know that we, we really lack amenities, or our parks are outdated, and we're trying to reconnect, revitalize all of our projects. So it's been a very useful plan. And the same thing with the Sewer Master Plan. That has, it's kind of hard to tell there, but the majority of the improvements that need to be done is along Mona Vista all the way from Richton to, oh my gosh, San Bernardino? I forget, but let me actually, hold on, hold on a second, I have it here.
You might also mention that the component of the Sewer Master Plan was to study the development of sewer system in the city's sphere of influence. And it was that element that convinced the county that the city is moving forward with the development of the sewer system in that area and caused the county to make the decision to not allow Mona Vista Water District to develop a sewer system in that area.
Right. So, yeah, so we'll, this Sewer Master Plan identified improvements along Arrow Highway, again, Mona Vista from Richton all the way to, I'm gonna say Holt, Moreno Street, Richton, Holt Boulevard, Ramona, and State Street. And that's in detail here, what those projects are. And in your sewer section of your CIP binder has more information on each of those segments as well. Okay, so. So again, these are, this is the summary of all of the completed projects by each of those categories. So for street and safety improvements, 6.6 million in total, 6.8, I'm sorry, 6.8 million in terms of facilities, 763,243. Park improvements, 186,000. Sewer improvements, 175,560. And plants and studies, a total of 373,140. So a total of completed projects totaling 8.3 million. And right now, we have six projects that are under construction, as shown in the slide. We have the Reader Ranch, Sunset Park Beautification Project, Arrow Highway in Fremont, storm drain improvements, and street improvements, the switchgear for the generator that's going here in the Civic Center, and the alleyway improvements started last two weeks ago, so it's in process. And we also have 16 projects in design, totaling about 68 million. And this is just a few that I wanted to highlight, like the Saratoga Park Transformation Project, the Fire Stations 151 and 152 remodeling projects, as well as the library, the Civic Center parking lot improvements, which we will be bringing to council for discussion shortly. We also have a public meeting for the Silicon Street and Third Street improvements. And of course, we're continuing implementing the Safe Rafts of School projects. Let me see. So, moving on to the actual five-year CIP, which includes projects that are ongoing right now, because they're not finished. And so in your binder, you, again, I, I mentioned you should have tabs for each of the different types of projects. Also, on your binder, I wanted to point out that you have, starting on page 10, by type, for example, you have facility improvements, and it lists all of those projects with the funding sources, which I'm not showing in this slide. The slide just shows the total. But starting on page 10, you have a list of the different funding sources. So for example, the San Antonio Creek Trail Crossings that I mentioned earlier, we have 100, we're using 190,000 in 2021 lease revenue bond funds, which is the match for the Reconnecting Communities Pilot Program grant in the amount of 750,000. And of course, the constructed, we need 16.5 million, which is currently unfunded. We haven't, we are, again, after the design portion of it, we will go for a grant and hopefully get the, get that amount funded, the construction funded, as the next step for that project. So these projects here that I have, that you see in this slide, is 10 of the 23 projects under the Street and Safety Improvements category. And they involve alleyways, resurfacing roadways, uh, resurfacing projects, I'm sorry, bridge widening, signal interconnect, ADA ramps, curb, gutter, sidewalk, signal modifications. So everything related to roadways. We have a couple of roads that are identified in the north of Montclair specific plan. So those are, we've included those in there as well. And in your detailed tab for streets, for example, if you go to your Streets and Safety, and, let me see, I'll point, one. Let me find one where we, we're going for grants. I think we could do like Moreno, yeah. So like Moreno on page 48, for example. We want to start a design of that project. And, but we are pursuing, pursuing active transportation plan, planning grant funds for, to do all of these improvements, which is a complete street concepts, adding bike lanes, sidewalk, ramps, landscaping, signing, striping for Mona Vista, for Central, for Moreno, and Arrow Highway. So we're waiting for, to hear back on that, and it's about, I believe, we're requesting about 20 million. Okay, let's see, what else? So moving on to, continuing on Street and Safety Improvements. I also want to mention that the year in which each project is shown in this, in this summary sheet is tentative, tentative, and the time of construction may be altered to reflect the city's needs and goals, as well as the funding. So as we hear back for, from our funding grants, or grants we have applied, that schedule could change. So we could move out a project based on the requirement or the timeline for that grant. So on this sheet, again, we have more median and pavement rehab projects, more roadway improvements on Moreno, Palo Verde, the Ramona Howard Roundabout, which unfortunately I haven't heard from Caltrans yet. I said I would give you an update, but I haven't heard from them. I reached out twice already, so hoping to hear still positive news before the end of the, of the month. I've also included the pavement rehab program, which is something that City Manager Star has, you know, wants to allocate a certain amount of funds to just do this annually, continuing to preserve our pavement program. The, I mentioned the Richton or North Montclair Street Road improvements, as well as, on this one in particular, is the, the Safe Rafts of School Implementation Project, ATP Cycle 6, where we have 6.1, um, oh, yeah, 6.1 million in grant funds to implement that project, as well as the one below it, which is also a Safe Rafts of School project along, strictly on Montero, for Montero Elementary. And the remaining projects are on Orchard, the San Bernardino Street while enhancement. I am going to get that done this fiscal year, one way or another. And as I mentioned, the Silicon and Third Street Road Rehab, which we have a public meeting on Wednesday, and more signal interconnect projects and fiber optic systems, just as we are building these roads, we're implementing those. So a total of 95, 94 million. But for fiscal year 24, 25, we're recommending a 15.6 million worth of projects, worth of street and safety improvement projects. So in terms of facility projects, we have the Civic Generator Upgrade that I mentioned. We're just waiting for a permit on that one. We're working on the Civic Center Master Plan, and we're estimating that it will cost about 4.5 million. Again, it's something we will be bringing to council and to discuss further and what, what that entails. The Fire Station 1 and 2 remodels, which is about 70% in design right now. The library, restaurants, and courtyard remodel is about 90%. We should be going out to bid on that project pretty soon, and of course, we'll bring that item to council for approval before we start advertising that project. We also have the public garage for the Trans Center, the Recreation Center flooring, which should be going on right now. We're still selecting a floor type. The Reader Ranch barn improvements, which is something we want to do in the future, but we just kind of separate it on its own, because we do have interior and exterior improvements that we're hoping to complete by the end of this year, using CDBG funds, and also other, probably lease revenue funds to get those completed. And hopefully have the park and the, the house ready for visitors. And I mentioned the San Antonio Creek Channel Trail Crossings, so get the design going on those, hopefully completed by the end of fiscal year 2026. And again, after that, apply for, after the design is done, apply for grant funds for construction. The Trans Center Enhancement Project, that's from the check we received from Norma Torres's office a few months ago. We're gonna get started on that. And the last one is what the IEUA calls it, the Turnkey Turf Transformation Project at Fire Station 151. Will basically get rid of all the, the turf and put in draw tolerant landscaping and a new irrigation system. As for park improvements, as you know, the, I mentioned, the Reader Ranch is under construction, it's almost done. It'll be done hopefully by the end of October, early November. The Sunset Park Beautification Project should also be done by the end of this year. And we're working on the Saratoga Park Enhancement Design. And actually, if we could go to that one on your page, I can, it's under your Park Improvements on page 66. So here I'm showing what we spent so far and what we plan to spend in terms of design costs for the, for fiscal year 24, 25, so that should get done. And once that gets done, then we need to complete the, we need to start construction. And that's, slating that for fiscal years 25, 26, assuming we get the almost 4 million of unfunded projects, whether it's 2021 lease revenue funds or other funds, I don't know. But we do have a 2 million grant for that project as well, but we're still short. And then we're also working on the design of MacArthur and Alma Hoffman Park Improvements. We have some concept plans, and we're gonna have some public participation meetings for those two projects. And then, of course, we want to tackle the remainder of all the other parks we haven't touched yet. And as mentioned, the 20, the Sewer Plan Update that was completed in 2022, identify, identified sewer mainline improvements to replace aging sewer lines and upsize sewer lines to increase sewage pipe capacity on Moreno, Arrow Highway, Richton, Ramona, State Street, and Mona Vista Avenue. So a total of approximately 21.5 million is needed to improve efficiency and accommodate future growth occurring in the North Montclair Downtown specific plan area. And we are working on some segments of that. As you can see in this chart, you have for fiscal years 24, 25, we're working on the Arrow Highway segment from Mona Vista to Fremont, the segment on Mona Vista from Richton to Arrow Highway, the segment from Palo Verde to Benito, and Benito to Holt Boulevard. We're working on the design of those. And in future years, construct, find the funding, and do it as part of these projects that we're working on, of the roadway projects, specifically the ones on Mona Vista. So this is the summary. We're almost at the end. This is the summary of the total investment required for each of the category of improvements. In the last three years, the Engineering Division has been busy delivering projects, and will continue with our commitment to complete these projects as soon as feasible and when funding is available. For fiscal year 24, 25, we are proposing projects totaling approximately 26.4 million. We currently have 18 projects, we're working on 18 of the Street and Safety Improvement projects, 13 of the facility, facility ones, five parks, and four sewer segments, so. And the detail of each of those fiscal years is shown there. And again, a total of 193 million worth of projects in the next five years is what we're laying out. So in summary, the five-year CIP presented tonight shows a significant commitment of city resources. It is based on what we know today in terms of funding and grant deadlines. Changes to the CIP is common, and we will bring agenda items to the city council throughout the year. Unfunded projects will be scheduled based, and completed based on availability of funding sources. And lastly, I want to thank Public Works Administrative Assistant Uhura Mackenzie for putting together the first five-year CIP for fiscal years 24, 29, under my direction. It was a great endeavor, and she did a fantastic job, as well as, as the rest of the team, of course, Rosemary Thier. Oh, Uhura Thier. And Christian Stevenson, our Associate Engineer. Matt Paradise is doing a couple of projects, and Jim Diaz inspecting all of these projects. And And, um, we're, we are all working diligently to get these projects completed. And that ends my, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, and I appreciate, uh, having this, uh, CIP in front of us today to go through all the items. Obviously, a big player on this is from the Measure L that was adopted by the Moncler Boarders four years ago, and obviously, we, uh, issued bonds to pay for a lot of capital projects. But one of the questions I have is, I know this, you know, this is a very ambitious plan, uh, very aggressive plan. I'll just see all that happen in the next five years, but it's not gonna happen, which I, which I know that. But also, uh, the funding sources, I assume we have a lot of funding gap sources here. I noticed like Moreno Street up there by the Moncler Place, uh, I believe Mona Vista Avenue north of the, of the Ten Freeway, so. What are all the funding sources, Ed, or are you looking at doing a, uh, CFD or facility to pay for some of this, or how?
Well, uh, not all of the funding sources have been identified at this time, but in addition to the lease revenue bond monies, uh, as Ms. Haredi indicated, the city would be looking at, uh, a number of grants that are available and constantly coming online through the infrastructure bill that was passed by Congress a few years back. Uh, we will be going after those grants on a regular basis. Um, in addition to that, the city does have some funds in the Economic Development Agency related to tax revenue bonds that are available. And the council, uh, years back had committed to a number of projects in North Montclair, particularly the Arrow Highway and Fremont, um, improvements. So, uh, funds are available for that, which should free up some additional lease revenue bonds for other projects. So as we go through and finesse, uh, each one of the projects and put focus on, uh, the ones that the council gives priority to, uh, we'll be able to hone in more and more on the funding sources that we have available on hand, as well as the grant monies that we are trying to secure.
Great. Mayor Potem Johnson, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Ms. Haredi, I just have, just a couple of questions. They're probably silly questions, but I can't help myself, I'm gonna ask you anyway. So when we looked at the items that are on page thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, there are, uh, multiple items that are in the works, but the funding has not been secured yet. So my question is, do the projects begin until we get the funding? Or do we wait until we have received all of the funding to start? That's my first question.
So, so we actually try to either have a, a conceptual plan, these, or preliminary design plans, so we can go after these grants. A lot of these grants, they want ready shovel projects. So, um, if we can continue after the conceptual design and do actual plans, and, um, let the, for example, for the Central Avenue Bridge, we're going to, um, be applying for the Bridge Investment Program. And we're gonna show that we're already at sixty percent design plans, and we're hoping to have environmental clearance by then, which those two things should give us points for, you know, to get us the grant. So I keep my fingers crossed for, you know, to obtain the eighteen million, twenty million that we need to complete that project. But we're continuing on design, and we're gonna continue until ninety percent complete or even a hundred percent complete. And then maybe by then, Caltrans will say, well, there's this bridge that's ninety percent complete, it's ready to go, we'll give you the funding, type of thing, so. That's, so we're trying to, um, prepare the design plans as, because we know we're gonna, like for the sewers, right? We're, we have to design all of those, because we know we lack, we, we need to do those, and we need, and we have road improvements, and we wanna do those in conjunction with those, so we don't have to go back and trench like other utilities do, so, yeah.
Well, that makes sense for large, for the large plans like the, the bridge. Of course, you can't do a portion of that and wait till later, so it makes sense the, the way you explained it. But for the smaller projects, do we start them, uh, when we still have some funds and then do a little later, or is that, is it true that all of the programs have to, all of the, the items have to be completely funded before you start?
So what you mean?
Let me say that we would not start a project until we have identified the funding sources to complete it.
Excellent, thank you. And then, one, my last question is from, uh, about Sunrise Park, that's on page seventeen. For some reason, I, um, thought that that project was almost completed. Is that not the case?
Sunrise? No, we, I haven't started on that one yet.
Maybe I'm thinking of, maybe I'm thinking of Sunset.
Yeah, or Sunset or Saratoga, MacArthur. No, I haven't yet, but.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, well, once we get, I guess, Reader and, and Sunset, we'll be looking at those, at the remaining park projects.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes my questions. Oh, one comment, though. You and your team did a fantastic job putting this together. Thank you for the clarification and identifying what all the acronyms are and our ability to see on this one, which is being in progress, one is waiting, et cetera. So it really makes it clear on what's happening. So thank you to you and your team for all of your hard work.
You're welcome. I love what I do.
Councilmember Ruth.
Yes. Well, I appreciate the fact that before we start a project, we're going to make sure there's funding. We all too often see, certainly with a business, they want to expect, put a, uh, an outdoor cover on something. They start it, but then they don't have the money to finish it, and it just sits there. And then four years later, they go to go back to do it, and there's a lot of problems. So I think this is the better way to do it. Make sure we identify the funding, go slowly. If a family wants to rehabilitate or redo their bathroom, they may not have all the money, but they can put in a new vanity, and next year may be new tile. It all, all doesn't have to be done at once. When I look at funding, I, I like the concept of going after grants, seeing what money is there, looking at federal and state monies that could come about, even regional monies. I would, how do I phrase this? I'm certainly not a fan of anything that puts a burden on a property owner. We've seen in many cases where there are local cities around us, I mean, going to twenty-three mile radius, that have had different special districts, and then they ask the residents to vote to increase that, and the residents don't do it because they can't afford it. We are hitting that wall with many people, they're not gonna be able to afford that. So I think that's the better way to go, even if it takes us a little bit longer. I, you know, would like to, uh, when we start to look at funding, make sure, not only, as you said, it's identified, but make sure it really doesn't impact residents in a negative way, or business owners. Having said that, in looking at some of the school improvements, or improvements near the schools, let me rephrase that, lest I be criticized. Have we talked to the school districts about potentially joining with us on maybe helping to fund in some way? They don't have to do half, they don't have to do a quarter, but if they could do something, there's a benefit to them.
Yeah, unfortunately, I have had meetings with, um, the Transportation Coordinator of the Ontario Montclair School District, and they actually want us to pay for some of their improvements to, you know, yeah, so.
I, I can look at budgets for any of these schools and show you where they could find it.
Yeah.
The last question, and I may have some later. It's in regard to Benson Avenue rehabilitation. What specifically are we going to be doing on Benson Avenue? I have an idea, but.
Yeah, and actually, we, we are going to have a public meeting soon. Not sure, I don't know, I don't have the date with me, but, uh, we are going to, we are proposing, uh, again, a similar improvements as Orchard, where we're, it's a one lane in each direction and a median, um, painted median in the middle for left turns for safe, uh, access to all those residential properties.
Benson becomes one lane?
Yes, and, um, and I believe so, right? One lane in each direction and bike facilities on each side as well.
Do you know how often bicycle lanes would be used?
Um, well, we are applying for a, an Highway Safety Improvement Program project, about two point four million or so. And we did, I believe we had to provide some information. I don't have that with me, but.
That's, I have, um, done my own thumbnail survey. I have an office in Ranch, Gukumanga. I'll drive Foothill Boulevard all the way out into the San Gabriel Valley, into Glendora. There are bicycle lanes. I drive them at all different times. I see them used very rarely. The same thing on Bonita Avenue as it goes through Laverne, parts of Arrow Highway. I, I do, I am out there at different times. I've been out on Saturdays, and I've seen these beautiful bicycle lanes where no one is using them. I don't think they're used as much as we think they are. I'm very concerned about the inconvenience to the residents. I also, and I'm gonna say this publicly, I realize I will take some heat for it, but I will say what I need to say. I think a lot of this, one lane on Benson, has to do with, we don't want people from north of us driving through Benson to get to the east-west connector. We need to be coordinating with our cities to the north, Upland, where it goes from two lanes down to one.
Well, yeah, I just.
I'm, I'm sorry, just a moment. I, I, in looking at this, residents on Benson need the two lanes. I drive Benson every single day. I drive home in the evening and see where it backs up right now. If you think people are gonna be using Central Avenue, I'm not picking on you, Ms. Haredi. If we think people are gonna be using Central Avenue or Mona Vista in place of Benson, they're not. What we're hoping is they'll drive over to Mountain and use that, and they won't. I, I already feel, you know, I, I know I'm gonna get criticized, but the bottom line is, I am opposed to anything that will reduce Benson to one lane. We already have problems there with the students exiting street side. I'd prefer we put efforts into doing something like that. Cutouts for the, the people if they need to exit the child, so they can exit it correctly. I'm, I'm not picking on you, but I really am opposed to this. We haven't talked to our neighbors to the north. There's gonna be a huge impact to them, and what we're hoping is somehow, some way, people will use Mountain. So, uh, I, I can't wait to flesh this out a little more, but thank you for the, uh, answers on the other, and certainly thank you for looking into the funding sources.
Uh, Ms. Mayor, if, if I may respond, um, so we have actually engaged in conversation with both Ontario and the City of Upland regarding Benson Avenue. In fact, Ontario is responsible for, uh, their half of the street, so Ontario has to be in agreement with whatever is being proposed on Benson Avenue. Ontario and Montclair both have agreed that, uh, the section from, uh, Holt Avenue north to the I-ten freeway would be conducive to narrowing it down to the one lane. Now, this is just a concept at this point in time. We will be having community meetings, getting input from the residents to determine whether or not, uh, they would prefer seeing it go down to one lane, uh, or they wanna maintain it at two lanes. But in any event, to address concerns related to traffic flow, in our, in our conversations with the City of Ontario, we insisted that a traffic signal has to be placed at, I believe it's Fourth Avenue and Benson, uh, where the school is located. Well, actually, there are two schools on opposite corners at that location. Uh, that would actually, uh, enhance the ability of traffic to flow on Benson Avenue, because that is the point where parents are picking up children at the various schools, where backup of vehicles, whether there are two lanes each direction, or whether it's taken down to one lane, the traffic backs up quite a ways. So putting a, uh, traffic signal at that location will relieve all of that backup. Uh, Ontario was originally resistant to the idea, but after pressure from Montclair, they agreed that a traffic signal should be placed at that location. North of the Ten Freeway, it will continue to be two lanes. Uh, there is not an effort to take it, uh, down to one lane north of the Ten Freeway. So again, this is just conceptual at this point in time. We will be having community meetings to get community input.
If I may, Mr. Starr. North of the Ten Freeway is Upland. It may be Montclair by about a thousand feet. As far as Palo Verde or Fifth Street and Benson is concerned, it is my belief that the entire reason for putting a signal there is really not what's been put out. Uh, it's what I've heard over the years, too many people exit at the Ten Freeway in Mona Vista, continue out on Palo Verde to go into Ontario, and our hope is that they will continue on to Mountain Avenue. Uh, you know, we need to stop inconveniencing our own residents.
Okay, well, that's your interpretation. I don't think that's how staff is operating on looking at Benson Avenue.
And I, as a council member, have a right to my opinion, and I have a right to say what I need to say without being corrected. Thank you.
I just simply gave staff's perspective, sir.
All right, let's go to Councilmember Martinez now.
Thank you, Meredith. For the, uh, more ambitious projects, are those completely dependent on the grant funding? Or have we looked into whether we might be able to, um, whether that would be budgeted in the future if we're not able to secure that grant funding? Is that something that would significantly affect the budget? Something that might be doable? I'm talking about the large ten million dollar, really ambitious projects that are on.
Right, again, we are trying our best to go after grants, um, for all of these projects. The reason we haven't used, uh, a lot of the lease revenue bond funds is because of that. We have received grants, like for parks and things like that. So, uh, I would say once we, if, you know, hopefully we get these grants, then, um, for the next year and, and following years, this, this plan is going to change, so. And we will identify those funding sources as, as they become available and do them at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Monica, thank you for the presentation. Did I hear you correctly? This is the first five-year CIP plan?
In, in a while.
In a while, okay, I was gonna say in the history of the city, but perhaps that was before.
In my first one.
Did you do this at your other, um, cities that you were with?
Uh, actually, I did not.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, in, in Santa Clarita, I did many years of, of that, but just for a portion of it, not the entire program. But for my other cities, other people completed it, so.
Well, I'm glad that you did it here.
Yes.
And the fact that it is so complex and detailed, uh, leads me to believe that you did do it at other cities, so I'll give you credit there anyhow. But thank you for the detail and its components. I do have some questions. And forgive me if they're a little, um, scatterbrained, if you will, because as you were talking, I was jotting down a question, and then a new thought would come into mind, or you said something else, I'd jot the next question. Did I hear you correctly stating something regarding a grant for Orchard and Palo Verde?
Uh.
Or be something between Orchard and Palo Verde? That's where I was confused, so my notes just said grant Orchard Palo Verde question mark.
Yeah, yes, the, the San, San Antonio Creek Trail. We have submitted a grant to do the improvements along the channel from Orchard to Palo Verde.
And those are for channel improvements only?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think you might have heard her make reference to a grant potentially for Benson Avenue.
I might have missed that.
Yeah. The same, Benson from Holt to Palo Verde.
And then you also mentioned a grant for Richson to San Bernardino, and that was regarding sewer improvements, correct?
Um, no, actually, no, it's all roadway improvements. So actually, I'm working on a grant right now for Richson. Yeah, Richson and a pedestrian bridge over Mona Vista. Uh, we do have, uh, we're waiting to hear from ATP, or Active Transportation Planning Grant, for the roadways on, the North Montclair roadways. Mona Vista from the freeway to Richson, Central from the freeway to Richson, Moreno Street from Central Avenue to, um, Mona Vista Avenue, and Arrow Highway from the San Antonio Creek Trail to the, to Mel's Avenue. And all of those details are, are in each individual, like if you go to any one of those, you know, Moreno Street is from Mona Vista to east of, actually, it's a little bit east of Central Avenue, because we're, it includes the intersection and a little bit past that, because we're implementing bicycle lanes on Moreno, right? So, and the description of what that is is in, is on page forty-eight, and it's like that for every single project. You have a little bit more detailed information on each of the tabs associated with that project.
And thank you for stating that alleyway improvement started two weeks ago. That was, uh, that's encouraging. I have some residents that ask me from time to time when they started or when their area would be under construction or, or rehabbed. On page thirteen, item number seven, the Holt Boulevard rehab that you have listed, I believe you have it tentatively set for, um, uh, construction either this coming fiscal year or the following. I have a question about the Bus Rapid Transit project that will be coming through on Holt. And will any of our improvements on Holt Boulevard, starting from the Pomona border all the way in, of course, well, for us, it stops at, um, Benson. The construction that will begin, and I believe the Transit Authority is in charge of that, correct?
Yeah.
Any improvements that we do on our own and that we pay for, how many? Any improvements that we do on our own and that we pay for, how many of them are going to be impacted by the BRT coming through? Because it sounds like we're going to have concurrent plans and concurrent construction on the same street. Am I wrong?
Yeah, so, yeah, let me explain a little bit. So for Holt Boulevard, yes, we're, it's, we're scheduled to maybe start this fiscal year, hopefully. I know we've been working on some plans, but maybe not. Maybe I was a little bit aggressive on putting it on this year, but it would continue to the next fiscal year, so perhaps it will start the next fiscal year. But the improvements that, that the, as part of the West Valley Connector project, really only affects two intersections, Holt and Ramona, and Holt and Central, and they're already under construction. So whatever we do in the future, and we're still working on the plans for Holt, we will incorporate those, you know, those bus stops into our plans, so I don't think there'd be a conflict.
So then, would there, well, perhaps I'm expressing some wishful thinking, or hopeful thinking. Would the county then be willing to pitch in some funds if there was some overlapping, if there was some overlapping work in those areas? I mean, is there a joint venture project that...
Well, yes, in those areas where it touches county area, yes, the county will be participating. Not to an extreme degree, but there will be a few hundred thousand dollars that will be coming from the county.
That's nonetheless a savings. Okay. Now, the library remodels. The county leases the building from us, correct?
Yes.
Any remodels that we do, will we be approaching the county in any way to have them pitch in in any type of remodels to offset some costs? Are we just going to bear everything based upon the agreement we have in writing with them?
Yes, the lease agreement requires that we are fully responsible for all maintenance related to the facilities.
Okay. And the construction that is slated in '25, '26 for Saratoga Park, we need, did you say four million, hopefully?
Yes.
An LRB fund, or, well...
Yeah, it could be...
Grant or whatever?
Right.
Okay. And staff will be watchful for any grants that might open up that we could qualify for in submitting for that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. On page 18, the sewer improvements that were listed for budgeted years '25, '26, and '26, '27, those figures, are there, do they take into account any padding of any unexpected costs with respect to inflation? The only reason why I bring that up, just look at the gold line, the price of steel went up astronomically, raised the price of the gold line, while the old estimates were no longer valid, they needed a new one, raised the price of it. So in any event, that could possibly happen with some of this. So are these projections just current pricing projections, or did you kind of pad it in anticipation of maybe something coming up ahead?
I added it slightly from what the actual update, I already made a slight increase, but definitely, those costs could go up.
Right. But so there's some, maybe a minute, okay, I appreciate you doing that. To staff and the city manager, thank you for, I'll piggyback on what my colleague, Mr. Rue said, and I think Ms. Johnson said, appreciate the fact that projects won't be started until we know they're fully funded. I wouldn't want projects to be in the process of being developed, and all of a sudden, we have to pull the plug on them, and then they become embarrassing boondoggles that make the news, because there's many agencies and cities that do that. Well, some would argue the train to nowhere with respect to the train coming from the north down to the south, or going to Vegas. Some would say that that's a money pit. But anyhow, I wouldn't want that to happen with respect to any project here in the city. I think that with the passage of Measure L and our LRB funds, I think we're in a position where we can avoid that type of fiasco. And then, regarding the bridge over Central Avenue, we are short approximately 20 to 40, what was the dollar amount you said?
Eighteen million, maybe more, depending on whether Caltrans will still validate the existing 14 million we have in highway bridge program grants, because, you know, there's a disagreement in terms of whether that bridge should be rehabilitated only, meaning just the deck, or not the complete replacement or widening of the bridge.
I'm of the opinion that perhaps the whole bridge needs to be replaced. I think it, as a city manager, I believe, said a few months ago, it would be my hope that Caltrans would view this as a serious project, because as it stands right now, and I'm not just saying this is doomsday and that this is private information, it's been made public, that bridge is not necessarily the safest should we have a major earthquake. And that's what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to be proactive in making sure that it's rehabilitated, reinforced, and I think hopefully, the state would step up to the plate and help us with that bridge. And then, you mentioned a little bit of a point of personal privilege from yourself that you would hope, on page 15, that the safe routes to schools items regarding Orchard will be completed this year, that you wanted to make sure that that got done, something that you personally wanted to see.
Oh, it was the San Bernardino wall project.
Is it the San Bernardino wall?
Yeah.
Okay, see, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, because it's been on my list since I got here, and I haven't gotten to it yet. So it's my personal goal.
And what is the holdup there?
Oh, well, it's not an easy task to, you know, address those walls that are, that exist right now, which are private. They're an eyesore, and we've been trying to find different solutions to it. But ultimately, I think we are just going to have to install new walls and work with each resident, and hopefully, they will help with the cost with that. But just put an entire new wall all along, San Bernardino on the south side from, excuse me, from Mona Vista to Fremont.
I would agree. And you've got some added material that the residents have added.
Exactly.
And it's not uniform at all. I mean, well-intentioned, I mean, I'm not knocking them, but it's not aesthetically uniform.
Exactly.
I had one more question, but my mind is slipping. I guess I can approach staff later. I appreciate...
You said anything about Orchard?
No, that was, she corrected me on that, thank you. Gosh darn, I'm hoping it was something important, it's bugging me that I'm forgetting, oh, well. Anyhow, I appreciate it.
I'll be happy to go over this binder with each of you to explain...
And you'll be in the room for the next meeting.
Where to find information, how to use it, or whatnot, so...
Thank you, I appreciate everything. Thank you for the explanation. Like my colleague, Ms. Johnson, said, it's an ambitious plan, very much appreciated. Let's hope, let's see how much we can get accomplished and implemented and completed, barring any natural disaster, or weather, or lack of funding. But thank you to staff.
Well, thank you, and just going back to MacArthur, Saratoga Park, excuse me, I know there's, there's shows four million unfunded, but this is a high priority project, just let everybody know that there's high expectation. And I'm hoping this project is under construction late next year, so...
Mm-hmm.
All right, anybody else? Anybody other comments?
You meant Saratoga Park? I think you said MacArthur Park.
Saratoga, yeah.
I think you said MacArthur Park.
Right, you started with MacArthur, and then went over to Saratoga, so I meant Saratoga.
Yes.
Okay, anybody else? If not, I think I'm supposed to ask, if there's any, we have any public comment, you have any public comment for the workshop portion, Andrea? Anybody submit a card for this portion? Okay. Then we will adjourn this, and we'll come back at 7 o'clock for the City Council meeting. Thank you.